Good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. And we have one member that always comes in about five minutes late, but we're not waiting. To entertain a motion to accept the agenda, this may be approved. So moved.
amended.
I'm guessing you're the UVM project?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're on the front of the, so we don't need to change the agenda from there. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 15th, as may be amended. There was one of them that needed a little... All right, this one was fine, for me.
Yeah, I didn't have any.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes of October 15th, 2019, please say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of October 24th, as may be amended. Okay, on this one, it's not a correction, as much as an explanation. Okay? At the very end, where it says, "Whilst Chair Fineran stated he would not stand up and ask the town residents to incur these costs, as a select board, if it comes to a vote, we will present it to vote." That...I wasn't considering where I was sitting when I gave my personal opinion.
Okay.
Because that's...and I shouldn't say it now, either. So that's the only thing, is an explanation. If it comes to a vote, the select board will present it for voting. This is...this could be read that we would not do that.
Hmm.
Okay?
Do you want me to rephrase it before I put it out?
No, 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 because that's...what's there is what happened. I'm just explaining that that was personal, not...I wasn't speaking on behalf of the select board at that time. And I should've gotten out of my chair before I said that. Okay, do you have any concerns? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
That's okay. Other than your project, is there anything else that we have citizen input for? That means you guys are up. Okay, thanks for coming.
It's up there.
Now, do you wanna...you gotta just unplug...
Yeah.
Just plug the HDMI into the spot where mine is on the round plate.
Okay.
Oh, you want this end of it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. How's it going?
Going well.
Good? It wasn't, Jim.
Oh, how about that?
Okay.
Hey.
There you are.
Ooh. There we go. Thank you guys so much for having us. We're a group of students from the University of Vermont, from the Rubenstein School of Environment and Natural Resources, working on our capstone project focusing on addressing bear conflict in Killington, working with Katie Gieder from the Vermont Fish and Wildlife. I'm Flora.
I'm Ally.
I'm Kate.
I'm Julie.
I'm Emily.
We're all seniors from Vermont. So just a little bit about what bear conflict is. So we're really focusing on any negative interactions between humans and bears, and that usually arises from bears becoming food conditioned. So what typically happens, and this is their research, is that bears will get...they initially start out afraid of humans, and then as they're exposed to things like bird feeders, trash, anything that's, you know, related to humans and on human properties, they get the more comfortable around humans, makes them food conditioned, and as a result of that, they might do things like what you'll see in the next slide here. So these are pictures, all from Vermont, that were sent into Vermont Fish and Wildlife. So we've got bears breaking into cars and totally destroying the interior of a car there. This was a home break-in from this summer in the middle there, and then this is just an example of the substantial type of damage that a bear could do to beehives. So really, these things only happen once bears reach a certain point of comfort around human properties, and so the goal is to really kind of stop bear conflict when it's still small, so that it doesn't escalate to this point. So the problem also has an impact on bears, so we can see here on the way left, that's a bear that was killed as a result of road collisions, so having bears attracted to human properties means that they're spending a lot more times around roads, so that can be an outcome. We've got a bear in the middle that was shot as a result of being labeled as a threat, so if a bear creates substantial damage or breaks into a home or just poses a threat to humans, it can legally be shot by wardens or the property owner, so that's kind of a sad outcome there. But what we want is here on the right, so we've got two lively bears. This picture was taken in Vermont this summer as well, so the goal really is to protect bears, because they play a crucial role in the ecosystem in Vermont.
So why Killington? According to the Vermont Fish and Wildlife, from 2016 to 2018, Killington had the second highest number of bear conflict incidents, with 39. Killington is also a super dense tourist area. There's a lot of skiing, snowboarding, hiking, climbing.
Yeah, so for our class, we just set forward a couple of goals for our project, and so our first one was to improve human health and safety by reducing bear conflict interaction. So that's something...the reason this was our goal was because it makes kind of our project more like wanted by the public, and so, yeah, so bears, when they become food conditioned, can pose a threat to humans. You saw in the pictures earlier, the break-ins and the damage caused, and so we want to improve human, yeah, health and safety by decreasing bear conflicts. Our other goal is to minimize bear fatalities, which is the other side of it. So when bears become food conditioned, there are...it does pose a threat for them, too, and they can be killed because they're more likely to be near roads or be in places where they can be labeled a threat. And our last one was to be able to provide multilingual educational material, preventing bear conflict, focusing on tourism-dense areas, and so the reason we really wanted to focus on creating multilingual information is because Killington does receive tourists from Canada, where some people speak French, but also some Spanish-speaking visitors, and so we wanted to make sure that our information was accessible to all people in the area. We wanted to focus on non-residential tourists and visitors, because Vermont Fish and Wildlife does a really great job of providing information for residents and businesses, because, yeah, that's the main...most of the people living here, and so we wanted to work with Vermont Fish and Wildlife to provide information aimed towards people who aren't going to be here for a long time. So the plan of action was, a couple months ago, we sent out a survey to Killington and Pike...to Killington residents through the Killington-Pikeo Area Association, as well as the town of Killington, and based off of the survey results, we've kind of, yeah, made the trajectory of our project, which has ended in creating accessible information for visitors. Yeah, so we sent out the survey, and thank you, because I know some of you folks really helped us get that out to community members. We had over 71 people respond, which was really exciting for us, because we are in Burlington, which is a little farther away, so to be able to get input and opinions and comments from people who are actually living here was really, really important. So we had so...we had a bunch of questions. We've just pulled out a few snippets to share with you, but we are working on kind of making a report of all that information. If that's something any of you are interested in, we'd be happy to share that with you. But these...this is just some information of the people that we were able to survey. So more than half of the people that respond to our survey had experienced some type of bear conflict, which was really interesting. We hadn't expected the numbers to be that high. And we also asked what kind of resources would be useful. And dumpster signage was a really big one. That was...this is the number of responses on this axis, and if you can see this one, it's on dumpster signage. So we will talk about that in just a minute, because we are working on that as well. But online materials and pamphlets and presentations were also kind of the next three. So some of our deliverables were ink, more of these ones. We'll go to dumpster signage in a minute, yes.
What's considered a conflict? Is a sighting considered a conflict?
No.
No, so we defined it in the survey as like more of like negative interactions, where...and I think I gave examples, bears getting into your trash, bears eating your bird feeder, causing any sort of damage.
Okay.
Yeah, not sightings.
Yeah, we did have some responses for sightings and more of those positive interactions, but this was really looking at those negative interactions, because that's the ones our project is really looking at.
Okay.
Yeah. So then we also had a bunch of comments. That was kind of one of the most interesting parts of the survey, is getting back those comments from people. And the span of opinions was also really surprising for all of us. There were some people that were very in favor of bears and supporting different initiatives to keep bears safe and keep people safe, and other people that just did not want them on the landscape at all. So that was also really interesting information. And then kind of all of this from the survey really led into what our next steps were for this project. And one of those is creating this pamphlet. Fish and Wildlife does have some really great pamphlets for some of those long-term issues that residents will be dealing with, but this is really focused on people who are here just for the weekend or short-term residents. And we have some copies of this printed out, and we'd love feedback, and we also are going to be working on distributing some of those a little bit later in the semester, if that's something you're interested in. So the last part of our project focuses specifically on trash disposal in dumpsters. So there are bear-proof dumpsters that Casella provides, there are about 100 in Killington, but part of the trouble is there's no educational information about how to actually use the dumpsters. So the last part of our project is going to be coordinating with Casella, and we're going to be making a sticker that you can just smack on the side of the dumpster. They'll have the information about what is bear conflict, why is it important to prevent bear conflict, and then the actual instructions of how to use the bear-proof dumpsters, so that they can, you know, fully be effective. So you can see, like, neither of these are bear-proof dumpsters, but like, the bears will go to great lengths to get into the dumpster if they know there's food in there. So that'll be our last bit, which is going to probably pass on to the next group that works on a project like this in our class, or to someone at Fish and Wildlife in terms of distribution of the stickers. Yeah, so that's all we got. We're gonna pass it... Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, we would love some feedback if you have any thoughts about what we presented today, if you have information, thoughts about distribution. We're working with KPAAs as well. We're hoping to work with them and give these to rental owners. Yeah?
I manage one of the condominiums.
Great, perfect.
And we have bear sightings all the time. There was a family with three cubs, and as you said, one of the...
We heard about that in our survey.
One of the...one of the summer renters decided to go out and take pictures of the cub. Fortunately, myself and somewhere else happened to be in the parking lot, because she wanted to get really close. We said, "No, because mom's probably in the woods." So...but we have the steel dumpsters now, and what I've done is, I have crampons? Not crampons. They're the metal thumb...
Carabiners, yeah.
Carabiners, carabiners, on a little chain, so that all the doors are locked, and it's easy for a person to use it. And we do have signs on the dumpsters for what goes in, because we have a recycle right next to it. The bears have never gone in the recycle. All it is is a plastic top.
Right.
So that stuff does work.
Good? Is it working? It's a good sign for us. Yeah, that's what it...yeah, initially, one of our things, we were like, "Oh, we'll make a dumpster, send this, we'd be great." And then we actually contacted Casella, and they were like, "Wait a second, we want to do this, like, we want to have our design team do it." So that's also really exciting, to have some type of signage, because that was something that was really lacking. So that's wonderful. Any other thoughts?
Have you done any research about the upcoming food composting laws that are going to go into effect? Because I see that as being problematic.
So this summer, I actually worked with Vermont Fish and Wildlife, and I met with people in the Department of Environmental Conservation to talk about that new law. And what we actually looked into is, I looked into the history of bear conflict reports, like, the entire database, and I looked into how many reports there were about compost. It really isn't a major problem. It's not like something that I think attracts bears. It's something that, if it's there, and a bear is on your property for trash or some other reason, they'll also probably try to get into your compost, but it didn't seem like something that people were reporting about a lot. But we definitely have been working with, like, the Vermont Fish and Wildlife, I'm speaking on behalf of them, has been working with, like, the DEC to make sure that there's material out there for people who are starting to compost at their home, on like, how to do it, so that it smells the least, so like, it can, you know, maintain the odors and make sure that they don't create more issues with bears. But that definitely is on their concerns.
Well, just so you know, our transfer station's right across the street, and we have compactors. Because of the food scraps that are in the trash at this point, because we're not fully separated yet, we have the bears actually crawl into the compactors, and they will climb the fence, and they will go in, and we...in the summer, we have to leave the ram in, so that they can't get to it as much, but they have strewn the food stuff right into the woods, right through. So just so you know, they will find it, and right now, the only...because it's such a small percentage of what we take in, we have just the toders to take in for the food scraps, which are fair game for the bears. So that is a concern, and how we're going to address that long-term. Because the biggest issue right now is, there's not enough volume to be able to get into the real, high-quality type of system, so the issue is on a smaller scale, and there's really no one accepting it locally. You know, how are we going to address that? So that is, I would say, an ongoing concern, whether it's for bears and also for the functionality of the system. So it is something you want to, I think, keep in mind.
Okay. So you talk about, you don't want the bears to become living off of dumpsters or whatever. So what do you do when you come to a town like Killington, and I can tell you it's owning an inn up here, that they're already there? They're already our dumpster...they're already dumpster bears. So, you know, and mama bear teaches the youngest one, and then it goes, and it goes, and it goes, and it just keeps on going. So you go up and down the Killington Road, and that's...that's part of the issue, but then they hit into other people's. You know, I just did a rehab on a building this year, and, you know, I had a 30-yard dumpster, and many of them, and I would tell people to make sure they don't throw any food in there. Well, one day, all of a sudden, I have this guy sitting on the top of my dumpster in the middle of the day at lunchtime, you know, and he's only like 50 yards away from us. You know, we left him alone, but, you know, and I found out one person, which is french fries and a little ketchup from the night before.
Yeah, well, I think that's really where the kind of the component, like, the educational component comes in.
Yeah.
But then also kind of working with Casella. Because at first, they, like, we contacted them, and they were like, "Oh, we didn't even know there were...there were that many bear-proof dumpsters in Killington. Like, we didn't even know they didn't come with any information on how to use them properly." So I think kind of combining those two are really trying to focus on these types of issues, where people just don't quite understand what the right protocol is, so that you don't...
Well, it's closing the sides, it's closing the top, and it's doing the carabiners, and some people forget to do it, and they're in there that night.
I think once the bears can't access the trash anymore, they'll try going somewhere else to find it.
Right.
So as long as you, like, close all the dumpsters correctly, make sure they're lashed, like, if a bear can't get in, it will leave eventually.
I guess my question is, is it, you know, it's a cycle that they learn, and a lot of them have only learned, the little ones have only learned to go dumpster diving. So when they move off...
Yeah, I mean, they are, I think, smart enough that, like, once they can't access human foods anymore, they'll go back to their natural instincts to go foraging in the woods, so...
Right.
Even if cubs did grow up only on human trash, I hope that they'd be...like, bears are really smart, so I'd hope they'd be no good dumpers.
You see it this year, too, with the abundant acorns and bee shats and everything. Haven't been that many reports of bears getting into dumpsters this year.
Oh, there is.
Much rather gravitate...I mean, there's still some, but not as much as we got last year overall across the state, so they would rather go for natural food sources. It's less risky for them. It's always risky to go dumpster diving at some point, because the mamas also teach the youngsters that there is danger there. Or they end up getting killed because of it, so they definitely want that.
Yeah, I think it was last year at North Star Lodge, you just walked in the front door. And walked down the hallway. And then came back, and, you know, I'm across the street from there, and I know exactly, there's about 50 yards off the back of the property, there's about an eight-acre lot that's, you know, just woods, and there's a big rock back there, and there's the little spot for them to, you know, that's their home there, and then they come on out and hit the dumpsters. So...
My neighbor left the shed open where they keep the trash, and he came home from work and found, you know, the guy pulling it all out. So he got out of his truck, and he just fired a couple of pistol shots in the air, and the guy just looked at him and walked right past him and carried on, and went and got his trash and took it back into the woods.
And that's part of the issue, is the bears are able, like, the one time you leave your dumpster unlocked, is they'll find it in there. I work at a summer camp in Plymouth, and it's always the one night we forget to relaunch the dumpster.
Right.
We wake up, and there's bear, there's trash all over the parking lot, and so, that's what we're hoping to do with the signs, is have that as just another reminder, don't forget to lock this, if you see a sign. Hopefully creating, like, systems over time to help remind people to, like, do, yeah, do it every time, because it's always the one time someone puts their french fries in the dumpster, and when you leave it unlocked, the bears get to it, and that becomes part of their routine, is checking there for food.
Sorry I missed the presentation, but I think you're years away from achieving the goal, because there's trash in the dumpster, they're gonna go to it even if they've not been actualized to getting launched from the dumpster, they just follow their goes. The town that store puts...has trash pickup on Monday, and all of our bears go to pitch fields Sunday night, because people that are weekenders that go home on Sunday night put their trash out. And then, you know, people that live there here only put it up Monday morning, because they don't want to pick it up.
So that's actually something that's in the pamphlet, that we're hoping to distribute to, like, rental homes, Airbnbs, condominiums, all those resort places, for the weekenders and the tourists that don't really know about living with bears. And it...in our pamphlet says, like, to only put out trash, like, when it's being picked up, so hopefully that message will get across.
Those wooden sheds that they put the trash in, though, are not really adequate. You can make a pretty good living fixing them. I'm a beekeeper, too, so I have to deal with them on a different level all the time. One of the best things you can do, if you talk to beekeepers or anything, is to encourage them to use bark wire instead of just smooth wire, because the bark gets...between the hairs and the tip of the bark touches their skin and shocks them. Smooth wires just lay down on the hair, and they don't get shocked until they back up. The wire goes under the hair, gets close enough to the skin to shock them. But if you have, you're a fish and wildlife, taking the hunter's safety course, and stay kind of plugged into the hunting, but in the last two years, it was a 100-pound bear taken and weighed in at, what do they call it, the Swiss market now?
Swiss farm, yeah.
Sorry, it's like 10 years now?
Swiss farm market, yeah, you know, that's, yeah, yeah.
And a 70-pound bear as well. I know one of them was during youth weekend, but if they could embellish the hunter's safety course to include not taking mother bears, because it's tragic for the cubs, and if they could also cover aging the bear by sight, based on the size of the head, the distance between the ears, maybe they could avoid taking some of the youngest ones. It's troubling, all of that.
I think some of that...
So what can we do? Yeah.
Well, this was a presentation they had requested, you know, the opportunity to do some work in the town, and what would we need? They put out the mailer, and they wanted to come tell us what their findings were, and they're going to be providing the pamphlets and Casella stickers and things like that for the...for the process, so there's no official act for us to...
Okay.
...to take, but it's just a informational piece.
There's our website that then we can offer to them, right?
Yep.
And put it on, and put it on there.
Yeah, if you know more of the condo association owners, we'd love...those are people who we'd love to be in contact with, to help get our information to those places, so...
Yeah, we really need help with distribution at this point, like, who do we give the pamphlets to, where, how would it reach the most amount of visitors?
But we can...we can help you with that over time, so...and, like I said, we can actually, we're in the process of putting up a new website, and we can actually have a bear conflict icon, and we could do something like that, so we can include that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Katie Gieder, by the way.
Hi, Katie.
I work for Vermont Fish and Wildlife, I also live here in Killington, so I've been experiencing this bear issue, too. We actually...we didn't have any bear issues, and we actually put a toilet ring outside one day in our garbage, and the bear got into the garbage can, and it was just a normal garbage can, we figured, "It's not going to go after our toilet ring." And sure enough, the toilet ring had been taken out of the garbage. Are you serious?
That was your neighbor.
So... Yeah, this is not like meant to be a one-time solution, and again, it's just...it's just meant to help and get the ball rolling, and try and address.
Right. And one of the biggest issues is what I refer to as Killington drive-bys, and you have people that...the people in the condominiums, like, the ones I rent, they're very good about it. We have a sign next to the door in every unit of what goes where, and they're really very good about it. But I'll come in in the morning, and there'll be bags just thrown in front of the thing, and someone that's rented a place, on their way leaving, pulls in the yard, throws it in front of the dumpster, and drives away. And that's the hard thing to get to. That's where the rental agencies come in.
Yeah, and that's definitely a pickle, because of the transfer station only offering certain hours that are difficult to get around, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
When do they come back out? I mean, they disappear in the winter, so...
They can be out anytime during the winter, if there's not much snow and we get a warm spell, but usually late March, early April is when we expect the bears to show up.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's more dependent on food, really. Food supplies go down, they kind of turn in.
They come out for the maple syrup? Is that what they do?
Yeah.
Okay.
We hope this will be kind of the beginning of some coordination and work with the town of Killington, to try to work on these issues. We know they're a big concern to a lot of the resort owners and stuff like that, a lot of people living here, so...
Have you been in touch with the resort?
Different people. I've given a couple talks in the Chamber of Commerce through the years, and I've talked with some of the different condo folks that have called and asked for some assistance with some of the stuff, but I didn't realize you were having a problem with your transfer station. I think that's something we can work on, and stuff with that.
At Killington, have you been in touch with Central Reservations? Killington Central Reservations?
No.
So the old ski shack, this right there, up on the second floor, is the Central Reservations, and they're the ones in charge of...they pretty much have somewhere around 60, 70% of all the rentals in the Killington area, and that's where people call in and make the reservations. So they would be the ones that would be able to, if you had your pamphlets, to give to them, to get into each one of the condominiums, plus yourself, right?
Right.
And that was Killington Central.
Kill...Killington Central Reservations.
Wow, do you have ideas on how we could work better in how we can reach out to people before they're back with that, and that'd be a big help.
So you have your email to the town manager? Somebody has an email to town manager, whatever? Okay. So we'll get you some contacts.
Yeah. Okay. In the back?
Suggest, sir, if you have any particular cases that are hardened, I've had some that were very persistent about getting into a bee yard, and it takes a little bit of persistence, but you can persuade them to not come back to the area using, I like, 12-gauge blanks, and they're rubber walls, they're about 600 feet per second. You wouldn't like it, but it wouldn't cause you any serious injury, but I've had great success with making them at Good Rose, and the field had bees there, and bees at my house. And in the spring, when food's scarce, they have to be a little bit more persistent, but after an encounter with a blank and with those rubber slums and rubber balls, they've never had one come back after that. They're very upset at having been touched.
Sure. And one other thing with your electric fencing, you can also fade it with peanut butter, tinfoil and stuff.
Hang bacon on it.
So they stick their lips or nose with, and they don't come back.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, cooks on now, actually.
Yeah, you just put raw bacon on it and then cook it.
By the expensive style.
Okay. Number seven, Shattagay Forest... You're welcome to, but you don't have to sit through all the budget and everything if you don't want to.
Just an hour and a half.
I was gonna say, just be careful driving. It's a mix of stuff out there.
If you've got your phone number, I'll be in touch.
Very possibly, yeah. Yeah.
I'd love to, Colonia, I liked your story about the dumpster.
Yeah. Well, it is, and Casella provided us with the bear-proof dumpster, and we just put the carabiners on the hooks.
Yeah, carabiners they cannot figure out, so they're great.
There's a lot of people that can't figure them out.
Yeah. Have a good one, folks.
Thank you.
Good luck with your bees.
It's B-I-N-E-R. It's all one word. C-A-R-A-B-I-N-E-R.
I'm just standing up for a second.
Shattagay Forest Project?
Thought you were coming down a...
Basically, this is, we've had to provide a letter...
This is for his knee.
A letter of support to the Shattagay Forest application for a grant to purchase some more land. It's actually off a river road on the backside. It's landlocked. Don't quote me, but it's somewhere in the 90 acre range type of thing. And they've applied for a grant and they were asking for letter of support. And they had prepared one, revised it, and Preston also looked at it. And I think there is nothing objectionable in the letter. And I think it makes sense. It's not land that we would want to see developed. It's in the forest preserve zone. So I would not see an issue with supporting this letter.
Right. And this request for money is to the state, not to us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, there's no, there's no cost to it?
This is no cost. This is a letter of support to get bear grant.
Who do you need to sign it? The board or yourself?
The board signs it.
Make a motion for the board to, or the chair of the board for the board to sign the letter of support for grant application.
The copy I got is everybody's.
Oh, you already have everybody's. So make a motion that we sign it.
Okay, all in favor? Just don't sign on Jim's behalf. Are you doing financials or is David?
Well, I can, basically I thought that I would do just a quick overview of what we have for the town financials for the golf.
Okay.
Basically...
Hey, David.
Hi, Dave.
This is through the end of October. I had asked Mona to print me through today because we did have a significant amount of invoices that came in right at the end. So basically, when you look at the expense numbers, the expense numbers through today, and they won't be changing a lot. There'll probably be another 15 or 20,000 for the next month. They are about 60,000, $62,000 in checks that we have just sent. So if you adjust your, we haven't had any real additional revenue, so if you adjust the expenses by about 60,000. And then we also have a couple of other items that are, that are added, that are not added into the expense item because they were in liabilities. So in essence, we still are about 40 to 50,000 dollars better than last year at year end. So we're, we're looking at a little positive number. Our cash, when we get to talking about the treasury report, isn't great. Our 250,000 dollar note is due today, I mean, not today, December 10th. That is in your, in your warrants this week. And the, what it's going to do is it leaves us with a balance of somewhere in the 15, 20,000 dollar range. Now, what they, what this does not represent, because we held off just seeing how the numbers came in at the end of the year. If you recall, last year, there was a 31,000 dollar bond payment made by the golf course that the town did not reimburse before year end. And what the auditor had done was reduced the debt to the town by 31,000 dollars, he said, rather than transferring the money rate back. But the reality is we weren't intending for them to pay the 31,000 back. So at this time, what I would recommend doing is putting the 31,000 dollars back in the golf and keeping the, what the golf owed the town the same. While we get through the cash flow issues and we start seeing improvement over the next couple of years. Then if we want to start looking at repaying some of that debt, we can, we can do that. But at this time, I, the golf course will need, in order to get from the time we pay off the 250 till we take it back out, we will need to put that 31 back in. And that's what I had intended to do.
So this is showing us 232 in the pro shop, the treasury's report?
Oh, you're on the treasury.
Yes.
Is that 232 including the 60 or whatever that you had spoke about?
No, this is prior to that. So when you, when you take that 230, when you take, and then we're also talking about the restaurant having the addition, they're, the funds that are in there, which are looking at the wrong year, because I did compare it to last year's. Our cash is, our cash balance is slightly less than last year. And that's primarily due to the fact that the beginning of the year before, there was like 68,000 dollars in the account. This, this year, there was only 15 starting. And we also had to pay the town back 46,000 dollars at the beginning of the year. So that kind of threw the cash position off a little bit. But we're basically going to be flat when it comes to year end and, and move forward. But no, the 62,000 is not included in that number.
Okay, and there's no other revenue, right?
There's no more, I think there was a couple thousand dollars. There's very little.
And how much is the loan, 250?
250, and then the interest is 7, so the payback is 257.
Right. And is the restaurant 86,000, correct?
Yes.
Or is there anything taken out of there?
No.
So 232 minus the 62?
I believe it ended up like 6,500 with that, plus the 31,000. And there's also the 15,000 we're still owed by the state.
So there's really only 256 sitting in the accounts, the two accounts.
Yeah, 256 plus the 15 that we're owed, which I expect to be getting shortly because we had made that request. And then I also have the 31 I have to put back in. So it's not, we don't have a real healthy balance yet, but hopefully that will change next year.
Okay, so, so we paid the 250, we have 6, then you wait for the 5, you put the 31 over.
Right.
So you got 37.
Right. And then 15 more, so it'll be like 52 for year end.
Right. And then last year we had, what, how much did we have last year at that point?
December 31st, we had 15.
15, so we're ahead on that. So then my last question here is, is that...
Sales tax reimbursement.
We're, we're showing on the treasury's report that there is a large amount for restricted funds.
Right. We will be dipping into that in order to get through the end of the year and then be back on track in January.
So what I'm getting at is that this, this restricted fund is actually in this 232?
Correct.
So we're not dipping into it, we're really taking it?
Right. But we're, we will, we will be able to, to manage that going forward.
And where do we stand with the golf cart buyout? We had put money aside to potentially do the roof?
That's the 44,000.
That's what the 44 is?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the balance of it, the 122?
I mean, that's what I guess I'm trying to figure out here. I mean, I'm being, 44,771,30 of balances restricted funds.
Which if you, if you look at...
But then it says 122,400 from golf cart buyout and cash balance and included in restricted fund balance. So if I'm reading that right, there should be like 166,000, 167,000 dollars in restricted funds.
No, no, no. The 122 is included in the receipts, in the overall receipts. But the, it's, the 44,000 is what you subtract from the 232.
Okay, so then that, that last three words or five words is wrong?
Because it says 122,400 from golf cart buyout and cash balance and included in restricted fund balance. Right. It should, it should say, and result, it basically created that balance, but it didn't, it's not included in that 44,000. So you're not adding that number to it. Because we paid 73,000 dollars in cart payments for this year. And the other thing that we did as part of that was the, if you recall, when we had the mower buyout and we didn't want to do the lease, we spent an extra 15,000.
Right.
Because we were going to spend, we were going to lease the whole thing and only spend 15, but we ended up spending 30 instead and not financing.
So are we still thinking it's going to be another year that we're going to have to have the golf course go out and borrow 250?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm hoping next year we start to see a reduction. And then, and when we start talking about the, the overall budget for next year, I have included a line item in there for golf, for golf capital for discussion.
You don't need a motion or anything here, right?
Um, no, because we'll do, when we talk about the rest of the treasury's report, we'll make a motion to accept that and that would be that.
Right, that would be part of it.
Is Dave here to speak on this or for...
He's, he's here to... And you were going to, and you're going to talk about the next year's budget?
Correct.
Right. Are we doing that right now?
That's, yeah, that's next on there. Did you bring copies of yours?
I've got it on the computer.
Because I did not, I did not print that. I apologize.
So we don't actually have the budget?
We don't have this, what he's presenting.
So, Chet, and Chet, just to make sure, like go back to the treasurer?
Yep.
Because on page two of the report, on these golf accounts, it does say 122,400 received for golf cart buyout and included in restricted funds.
Well, it was. It was put in, that was what created the restricted fund. And then we've paid the 73,000 dollars for the golf cart lease for the first year out of that.
So we don't actually have that in the...
Well, I'm just saying, so then it should be changed, that's all.
Yeah, no, we got to change the language in it, yeah. I mean, I want to, I'll talk to Lucetic about that.
It's kind of misleading thinking that there's 122,400 in. If it was, I mean, really that 122 shouldn't have been put into...
It's, what we have is the 44.
Well, the 122, because of the way the, it works, it's, it's, the treasury's report is actually the checking account. So it does go into the same checking account and then we hold it in reserve on, on the books, but it's still in the same checking account. So it should say that it was included in, in the cash receipts. We should probably clarify that.
And this 286 includes the 31?
Yes.
So it'll be higher?
No, it'll be 31. So 31 backing down out of 286.
So it's going to make it interesting to me when we start talking about next year's budget. Because if we took in, whatever, 122,400 for the pay, you know, for the trade-in of the golf carts and we put it in to a bank account. And then we use 73,000 dollars of that to pay for the golf carts. And we only have like 30,000 dollars really, we really only have 6,000 dollars left in the accounts now. Because we're talking about giving back 31,000 from something that we had paid or whatever they paid. So now next year, and I hope in the brown thing, you know, where are we getting the 73,000 dollars to pay for the golf carts? Because it's like five years, correct?
Yeah, and that's in the capital budget line item that I told you.
Okay.
I included. Which is why when we, we go to talk about the capital and the other, and the town side, we will be looking at, I have a number of 175,000 in there, which is 100 for capital and 73 to pay the rent for the thing. Is, is the way it's set up at this time.
Yeah, I'll wait for that.
Yeah.
So do we have the budget to look at?
I can plug it in.
If you, if you have an HDMI plug?
Uh, yes. Uh, no, I don't know what I have. I don't think I do regularly.
Just the USB?
Can you just email it to you?
I can email it to you.
Email it to me. I apologize. Actually... Is it the same one he sent on the 19th or on the 6th?
Yes.
So this is the first, this is the sixth month right here?
Yep.
Yeah, that should be the one.
Can you go on to the library and sign on a computer and print it?
I don't have, I don't know their printers. I don't know.
Okay, so Dave, this is just January to June, correct?
January to June, yes.
Right. Okay, and there's really not much income in January, February, March?
First three months, right?
Firstly, nothing. No. So then we start to see income in May.
Right.
So this doesn't show a lot of positive number, a lot of positive numbers.
Okay. Can you just, while he's looking for that, what is the revenue expected in those names?
So revenue for, total course revenues for May, 82,000, and for June, 146,000.
Okay, and that was compared to what this past year?
It's about a 3% increase.
Okay, so it was reasonable.
Yes. Yeah, nothing we've put in here is crazy and over the top.
Is that 3% increase due to you thinking more play or increasing prices?
Uh, it's not, it's not due to a price increase. We haven't discussed price increase in terms of daily round, daily fee. If we do have one, it's going to be, it's going to be minimal. Where I see a small, again, it's only 3%, it's going to be in our pass holidays.
Yeah, I mean, that, because I don't think you, I mean, you're not going to raise the, the fees during May and June because that's where you're trying to get, that's where you have the lower price. So the, the, out of this, out of, out of this 200 and something thousand dollars, the majority of it is what you're expecting in season?
A lot of it, all of it, the season pass, we only allocate, we allocate for June, July, and August, we allocate 16,500.
Yeah, but we're only, I'm only looking at May and, so out of the May, May and June, you said there was like 82 and whatever, so.
82 and 146.
82 and 146, so. So like 220 something or whatever total.
You said, right here, it's listed as 241 for total course revenue.
Total course revenue, you're only, and, and basically 25,000 you're believing is just due to...
Yes, it's about, yeah, 24, about the two past, past six.
And that's about where you were this past year?
Yep. And then 30, 33,000 for F and B.
Okay. And the same thing there, you're just putting in like a 3% increase?
F and B had, had a really good year this year.
Yeah.
About a 25% increase on the year before. So my raising was a little bit more conservative, trying to maintain and steadily grow what we built this year.
Right, okay. So you're not putting in the 3%?
It's, 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 it's around two. It's, it's a little bit, but not a lot.
Okay.
Because we did grow it so much this year. And again, I, I see that, I don't think we'll have a 25% increase in food and beverage, but we could be surprised again on that much of growth.
Right, okay. So then for the January through June period, the expenses?
Yes.
Oh, there's the operating income right there.
There's labor costs.
Well, this is, no, that's still the same budget. You looking at, you want to look at the 12 month?
No, January to June, six months, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's, that's what we're really, you know, I mean, January to June.
That's where we are and it, it's showing a net, which we would expect, a negative of 170,000.
Yeah, okay. So the expenses, and when do the expenses, so, okay, so there's your expenses. Where are the actual expenses?
It says total course operating income and losses, 103. And then there's the, the management fees and that stuff.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So total expenses for January saying 28,195,98.
Yeah.
Right, with no revenue. So that's what I, that's, that's the line that I'm looking right there. That's where I was looking for. I think you just lost it for me. No, you did, right there, the two bottom lines. That's what I'm looking for.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So zero, zero revenue in January, which is expected with 28,195,98 expenses, okay? And it's down to 24,097,6, 35,000 in March. So why such, just...
We start to bring on...
March is when you start getting ready.
We start to bring on labor in the golf course towards the second half of March.
Right, okay.
So course maintenance, labor, 11,013.
Yeah, it goes from, I think that's nine to 18 or 19?
There's a little bit of labor in March, if we agree on our manager.
So, so when I go back up to the top, not, just keep it right there, Chet, the toe... So, so when I go back up to the top, not, just keep it right there, Chet, the total labor on the January, eleven thousand nine ninety-three? So if one doesn't, if somebody says, how is there twelve thousand dollars worth of labor in the month of January?
Yep.
When the golf course is closed, can you explain that?
Yes, that's the, um, the salary staff in the maintenance department.
Okay, and that includes?
John McCauley and Peter Vissel.
Okay.
As of historically, but that number is down a little bit, because we have taken into account the possibility of when Peter's departed.
Okay, so you don't have the, the Peter is departing yet into your budget?
Uh, it is in, yes, it is in this one.
I don't, I don't... So the only person to hire it on in January, cause, cause the contract, the contract that we have that goes through the end of this next season, that's in a different line item.
Correct.
That's not a total labor.
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and you're taking care of, out of that line item, okay? So January for twelve thousand dollars, I mean, I, I thought that we only have one employee at that point. I, we, I could wait for that in contracts or whatever. But I think, I, I just think, I think that should be changed.
That's more than, that's...
I think that should be changed.
I'm wondering if the salary tab now, if the salary tab says nine thousand eight hundred, which is where it should be. If I go into that detail again.
And does that, whatever, the nine thousand, is that just the salary, or is that the matching of federal taxes and payout?
This, this number includes all the auxiliary add-ons.
For the, for an employee?
So, yeah, sales, yeah, my, uh, kind of, some of that stuff. So that's...
And, and, and then is that include, so I just wanna make sure that we're on the one, I know Peter is leaving at one point.
Yes.
But I know Peter is only with the town up until December thirty-first.
Right, cause it, because of the new, the new budget year, we were turning over that position to...
Brown, January one.
Correct.
Okay, so what I just wanna make sure is, is that, I know, like, if Peter's here January, February, March, no matter what we do or how we do it or whatever, that I think that eleven nine nine three is going to be putting in, with the town matching the four oh, not a, I would call it four oh one, but whatever, the pension or whatever.
Yep.
Okay, which wouldn't be in there in January. That's, okay, February or March.
Right.
But the, yeah, and, and typically, if that's only John, which is, this is something we're gonna have to work out.
If we don't hire a new golf course superintendent in January, that'll be...
Well, but the assumption...
Well, we were told by Brown Golf that they're not gonna have somebody here. John Brown said they were not gonna have somebody here until, till, till, till the end of March, starting in April.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm just, you know, I mean, it's not big, but it's, i- i- if it's seven thousand of that a, a month, you know, there's twenty-one thousand dollars, that's...
Right.
Which is about probably where your real money was, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So... And then if you could scroll back down, so those two lines there, okay? So, revenue, well, okay, and, yeah, and that's, so then all of a sudden, we start getting into May, where we actually are bringing in more revenues than expenses.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right.
And the same thing in June, we're bringing in. And I just wanna say that, you know, sitting once before on this board, that number didn't go positive until...
July.
Till July, so, you know. To see it going positive in May now is, and, and it has happened in the last two years also, I believe, so it's nice to see that.
Well, the ones, the one year we had the rainy May.
I don't know that May did this year because of the rain, but... But I think, but I think we did it in June.
We still, we did okay, but we still, that, that one didn't go quite.
Well, what it did, our expenses were down, but we also, our play was down because of the rain.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, and just so you're, everyone's aware, um, we will not be doing a golf audit, um, this spring. We will be actually combining it with the town's audit in July, so there'll be an eighteen-month golf and a twelve-month town in the next audit.
Right. There'll be a January one of nineteen to a June thirtieth of twenty.
Yeah. Is that right? Twenty, yes, correct.
It's eighteen months, yeah.
Yeah.
Twelve and six.
But, you know, my brain's just a little slow. I can't even use the drug excuse, I'm not on any. So...
I mean, that's typical to what we've been seeing anyway, so...
As I recall, when, I remember having the conversation a couple of years ago, uh, before I was involved in this, the, the net negative typically at, at July one was about two fifty.
Right.
So, I mean, this is all proving.
Right. And in this, the golf cart paying, just, I mean, it's been so long, I, I don't think we're paying during the closed months on the golf carts?
That's correct.
It's only for the months that we're open, and that starts in...
It's six, it's six months at twelve-three a month, or something like that.
Right, and that's included, I would guess, in the May and June in here, just to make sure it is? Or is that on the capital?
That's on the capital side.
Yeah.
That is not included in this one.
Okay.
Uh, yes, it is.
You do have that seventy-two thousand dollars worth of payments?
No, I don't have.
No, twelve.
I have a man, I have a man of sixty-six hundred, cop lease, starting in April.
Uh, that's what I would think, yeah, sixty-six times five, seventy-two.
Alright, well then we're, we might be duplicating, so we can have that conversation.
Okay, yeah, so, alright, so that will make a difference there too. So what do we need here?
Um, well, do you wanna look at the twelve?
Yeah.
Click on it would be helpful.
We're gonna be looking for the same two, at least I am.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really...
And there they are.
There we are.
Thank you.
But that's nine months, not twelve.
We need July.
Well, I think it slid on me over here, I gotta go. Uh-uh, it's not that way.
No.
Here's first.
There you go. Now, I just wanna make, like, so, Chet, the golf, the course operating income or loss, whatever?
Mm-hmm.
So that line behind will go to, is that including the management fees, or the management fees after that?
Fees after that.
Okay.
That goes under, what do they call it? Um, that's down here.
Right, so there's the, what's the six, the cart lease is there, so, but yours, but do you have it in before or at, well, this is your budget, so this is what it is. So, um, that would make me wanna say, go back to the sixth month and see if it's there, or if it's up higher, but, or if you can take a look at. So, so in here, after the operating, after the cost operating loss or income, income or loss?
Then this comes from that.
And then it comes down afterwards, so in the sixth month, is that sixty-six hundred there in the sixth month, or is it before? That's what the question was before.
Uh, it's in the same, it's...
In the same spot?
It's in the same spot.
So then, Chet, you were right on that, then, it's not duplicated.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Okay, cause that's showing twenty-eight, and then scroll down.
Right.
And then there's...
There's your sixty-six.
It starts there in April.
Right, it starts there in April, okay, alright, so that's fine.
Okay.
And then the ma, and the ma, the management fees there, so afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay, so then...
So for the... Now the question, and... Could make this work correctly, look at this. So, we see the, the course net operating at a hundred and ninety-eight positive.
Say that again now?
Well, we're looking at the...
Yeah, okay.
The net positive here, um... So the, for the twelve months, it will look good, you know, just from a, from our books perspective, we're always gonna be starting off with a negative every year.
Right.
Um, is, is what'll happen, so it'll take us a couple of years to, to dig out of that.
Right.
Uh, but, you know...
But we know that.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's why we say that, you know, and now the town, I mean, the town technically is borrowing the two fifty, but we're saying it's the, the...
Well, the golf course is taking care of its own debts. The town is always responsible for all of its debts.
So right now, the town, the, the golf course is borrowing the two fifty, and they're paying the interest on the two fifty, which is different than it was in the past.
Correct.
You know, so, yeah.
But they're showing a net, a net for the twelve months of a positive twenty-five thousand dollars at this point, but that includes the capital expenditure, which...
Right.
We have to determine, you know, how we wanna look at that.
You know, I mean, you're showing at the end of that twelve-month period, a twenty-five thousand dollar. Okay? Twenty-five thousand, and that profit of twenty-five thousand, and, and, and that's including in the year that you actually are paying out of the revenue, the golf carts, this time around. Last, this current year, we were not paying out of the, we were not paying out of the budget this year.
It wasn't budgeted.
And that's sixty thousand dollars that's in this expense, so that's a, that's a big number that's included in that.
Right.
And that's, and then we'll have that conversation about the other piece.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so I mean, you, you guys have been hitting the numbers that you've come to us with for the last two years, even with the rough year that, you know, you've been hitting the numbers, so...
Okay.
So, yeah, we just wanna make sure we, we'll have, and we'll have the conversation about, uh, how we wanna address the capital and, and looking at, you know, if they're, if it's gonna be able to pay the golf cart lease, then we're actually putting in capital, which will change what we're doing in the other. Uh, I was looking at a worst-case scenario at this point.
Right.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to accept the...
Well, I think what, what we now need to do, uh, before we do a motion...
I think we need to have the capital squared away before we can...
Well, I'm just saying, we wanna, we wanna refine it, and we wanna import these numbers into our system, and that's what we will ultimately approve, once we have that finalized, and we know where we're gonna make the expenditures for that.
Right, but they're essentially not gonna change from here, it just needs to be a little more put together.
Hopefully it changes, although they have a better year.
Okay.
So now, we're going through, so, so we're done with this, we're done with number eight.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then we're gonna go through nine, ten, eleven, whatever.
Yeah.
And this is, um... This, this next year coming up, starting, whatever, January or July, or whatever we're gonna call it, for the golf course, is the last year of the three-year contract that we're currently under. So just for me to know, when, when will we be going, and that's not an open discussion, that would be an executive session for contracts, we're just gonna start and talk, so, you know.
Right, we need to discuss where we go from there.
And to be fair, we as a board, need to first be going into an executive session without the people we're doing a contract with. So we come together to talk too, so I'm hoping we do that either tonight or at our next meeting, or something like that.
Yeah, cause I, right now, the next season, because the, the contract started in April.
Right.
Um, and so, come a year from this next April, we'll be starting a new contract year and, and knowing which direction we wanna go in at that point.
Right. I just wanna make it known that, you know, don't feel bad if we go into executive session at some point, or contracts on a golf course, and you're not included, because, you know, is the way it's done.
Okay.
Okay. To the town.
Oh, we're great with you. You don't have to hang around either.
Thank you, everybody.
By the way, David, I was, uh, down at Orange Lakes a couple weeks ago.
Oh, you went down, that's right?
Yeah, very nice.
Had a good time?
Yeah, I don't know that I'll play the, the, uh, what you got, the reserve, uh, unless I can get on the really front tees, cause it's pretty narrow with the water. No, but it was, it was very nice.
Good.
So, um, this current year's financials, um, actually, we are just in the process right now of, of processing the next payment for the school, so it's on December first, um, and so that will change our revenue numbers once we pull that number up, but we are still in the, in a really good place. Uh, I don't have anything exotic to talk about in the financials. Um, I think we'll know better. We did get our, our most recent, um, options tax payment, and the number was up about six or seven thousand dollars. We just got that two days ago, uh, over budget, so we did a little bit better than, than anticipated. Uh, so I think that's, that's going well. As far as, um, the other part of the financials, I will be doing the two bond applications, um, that will be submitted prior to December sixth. Once we complete those with the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and the fact that the state is now only requesting the hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars be returned, um, I am very confident that we will not need to do short-term borrowing this summer. Um, so I think we're, we're getting into the, in the right cash position, and I think, uh, everything from the town side is, seems to be going as planned. Um, I don't see any, like I said, there's nothing out there.
It's not really.
It's plastic, by the way.
Close enough.
Um, I don't, but there's nothing really exotic in the budget that, that's happened or been unexpected. So I don't know if you have any questions related to any of these items, but...
Um, it's a very minor thing, but we had discussed, uh, painting the road twice next year.
Yes.
I'm guessing that's accounted for?
That's in the budget for next year, that's not...
Right.
Yeah, well, well, we're not on the budget, this is October financials.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of you.
You skipped that, you skipped, you skipped the whole agenda item.
I did. Yeah.
But we are, we are, if you look at, uh, year-to-year costs, we're really on target with being about the same place we were last year. Last year, we were at total expenditures at this time, nine forty-four, and we're at nine seventeen this year. So we're, we're just...
We're five months into twelve-month budget.
Correct. So, in general, we're, we're right on target for what we would expect.
Okay.
Okay.
So we don't need a motion for the October financials, but we do need a motion for the treasurer's report?
For the treasurer's report.
So move.
Okay, any further discussion on treasurer's report? All those in favor of accepting the treasurer's report, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Well, I did a couple of, the... Couple of the compar, comparison budget line items, um...
Now we're in the budget?
Now we're in the budget. Basically, the, the last three items that we had to go over were bonded indebtedness to capital expenditures and then revenues.
What's bonded?
Well, I'll go right here.
What's up is bonded indebtedness.
Huh? That's our debt payments.
No, he said what's up on the screen, it's not what's up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said what's up was the bonded indebtedness.
Yeah, 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 he's like, that's our bonded indebted.
Okay, if you guys all remember this funded document we had last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the, the one thing I wanted to, to point out from a capital perspective, is from a proposal of one million three oh five for our sustainable capital budget expenditure, um, we had a one percent increase, and we have matched that exactly, uh, with what's proposed, so it's actually up only twenty thousand dollars, um, to maintain where we wanted to be. So I just wanted to show you that total before we go into our further discussion. Um, so this is operating just as planned, staying with the sustainable capital funding plan. There are numbers that are shifted around, because if you recall, last year, we made two shifts. Um, one was to increase the, the bridge capital a little bit, cause we wanted to pay for an additional project, and the other was to the guardrail. So this is putting the numbers back where they're supposed to be. Um, so this, I think, is, uh, is the right place, uh, we wanna be for the town. From a bonded indebtedness perspective, um, I did this a couple of days ago, um, looking at what are our debt payments gonna be this year? I didn't have, and this one, this one doesn't show the, the line item for the, uh, the one million dollar, uh, roadway bond, the million, one point five five, one point five eight eight million dollars. Uh, that'll be about another hundred and four... roadway bond, the million, 1.55, 1.588 million dollars, that'll be about another $140,000. So, there was an increase in the bonded indebtedness, which was planned as part of the two cent, well, we actually, if we looked at what we expected the tax rate to do this year, it was supposed to go up 2.7 cents. So, this is numbers that we do not have to put, the 268 is actually the first payment on the, the public safety building. I was thinking that we were going to have to make that payment, given that we moved up the bond application and the bond issue six months, but in talking to the bond bank, we're actually going to have only, interest-only payments for that year, so I have revised this budget. And I gotta see if I can find that for you.
For everybody that's in the audience, E is the proposed budget.
Yes, E is the proposed budget, and D is last year's actual, is the last year's budget.
Is this year's budget.
Yes, the budget we're in, yes, the last year we voted.
Right.
Got so many of them that came up today. So, what you'll notice is, and I, I don't have the breakdown with me, but this is the summary of it, the 1.35, 2.5 million. What I had done is, knowing that we needed to make sure, and this was something we discussed over the past few months, that we needed to start putting some capital money into golf, and in addition to that, the, the auditor had said, we need to start putting some capital money into the golf, he recommended about $100,000 a year. So, when you look at the current capital project funds, this revised budget has a million five in it, because that has $175,000 allotted to the golf course, which would then allow us to pay the $73,000 for the cart lease and still have the $100,000 in there for the process, for the regular capital.
So, now that changes everything that we just talked about with David here.
Well, it doesn't change, I mean, this was just-
It does.
Well, I mean, if we were to go this way, but I can also take that $70,000 out of here now.
Well, I mean, he said that the golf course will be able to pay the 72 or 73,000 for the golf cart.
Right.
And what we're saying on this sheet here is that this, this money is not being, this $173,000 that we're talking about is not being raised by the golf course in revenue, it's being raised by taxpayers putting the money into.
This was a worst-case scenario?
No, no, I know.
And the 75,000 doesn't need to be there, the fact that it's covered with the 60,000, we then can say, well, now this is going to go down by 75,000.
And that's what I, I mean, I don't have a problem saying we're going to put $100,000 for capital. But I do have a problem sitting through a agreement on his golf course proposal from a contract, just saying that it's covered in his budget, and then us saying, well, we'll cover it.
I just, I had missed that in their, in their budget, so that's, we're, we're in a good place. So, and, and then as a result of only having to make interest-only payments, and in addition, the, the golf debt is being refinanced this particular year, so there'll be no payment on the golf debt. Basically, we're going to take our 217,000 we have in the reserve funds, pay down the 1.4 million dollars that's, that's due, and then we're going to refinance the balance for the 10 years, and then the next payment will start-
Right.
-the following year, so as a result, our current bonded payment will go down this year. So, if you assumed we had the 75,000 in there, oh, and on the revenue side, basically, the only thing I did in the revenue to talk about is, you'll notice that the, went from the 3,656 to 3,812 on the amount raised by taxes. Before I started, we had talked about the, the likelihood that we'd have about a 2.7 cent increase this year. I put two cents in for the increase, just to say, where would I end up? In this case, we went, if you put two cents in, we'd go to 3,822, 812, and we would end up with a net, if we had the, if we had the 75,000 in there for the payments, we'd have a net negative of 36,000. If we take that out, we'll have a positive 36, which means if you took that out, we'd actually only have a cent and a half increase. So, we can, we can work, and we're right in line with what we had planned to do for last year. I mean, we're, we're hitting the numbers right on the money. What I haven't done yet, to see if there's anything revisions we got to do, is I haven't remade that spreadsheet to say, what is the 10 years, and, and looking at all the different pieces, and I'm going to do that over the next week or so, to make sure that, that it works, that the same thing works throughout. Because if we're able to reduce it a half cent, we still had another cent that was going to go up the following year, it might still go up a little bit, but I want to know what that number is before we go forward. But we are getting to where everything is, is being included. And I was fairly conservative with the, the numbers for the, the option stacks, so hopefully we'll do better with that, and if they have gotten the 1% back in on some of the short-term rentals, we'll see a little bit of a boost there.
So, on the bonded indebtedness, one, two, three, four, six from the bottom, the emergency generator, I know we had a talk about getting generators around here, did we do it, and is that when the first payment's coming in, the 5,000?
It's in process, that's, that's in process, we have not installed them yet, I'm working on that. One of the, the big issues is, we're going to have a spare generator here, a spare propane generator here next summer.
Right.
And, and looking at, would we be able to just relocate that?
But, but when we talked about this prior to last winter, one of the-
We're going to-
I know my biggest concern was the garage, I mean, these guys are out there at 2:00 in the morning plowing, they don't need to be coming back here and manually-
No, I agree, and, and we are going to have, we're trying, I've been trying to get, there's electricians, it's become impossible to get now. We're trying, all we need to do is get a couple of the, the switch boxes put in, and we can, we can manually plug in, and that's all we need to be able to get to. We have a portable generator that we can run.
Can we do that this winter?
We will have that done.
And since we're talking right now about-
Yep.
-electricians not being around, and I was a little late this morning, I did see the one going up and down for the lights the other day.
Yeah.
Well, thanks.
So, it's just, it's like, you know, I'm scheduled months out all the time, so.
Saying thanks, I saw him up there.
Yeah, so it's just, it is what it is. But, I mean, I think we're, from a budget perspective, and, and again, not looking for anything other than if there's any direction changes you would like to take, basically, I'm going to refine this budget and, you know, look at the, the, the actual tax implications for the next time, and then if there's any revisions, and hopefully finalize the budget on the 17th of December.
So, the only thing I, on, on revenue side, and solid waste user fees?
Yeah.
The other day, I just happened to be looking online for commercial users, and, I don't know, it goes back to like 2006, I don't know, I want to say 6 or 8?
Our, our last price adjustment was 2007.
2007, and it says like $200, I'm trying to remember, $200 or whatever, or $265 for 5.4 cubic feet?
It's basically-
And 5.4, if I, if I, if I go into a calculator, I ask what 5.4 cubic feet is, it's, it's a few tons or, I forget what you guys have in there, let's go to it.
It's effective July 10th, 2007.
Yeah, so let's go down, and then just go to, so, um, commercial.
$290 for a coupon card.
A coupon card, a coupon is 20 cubic yard, and if I convert 20 cubic yard, it tells me it's like 5.4, um, tons.
Well, you can't tell tons.
20 cubic yard truck or whatever is-
20 yards is a lot of truck, I mean, typically, a pickup truck will be two yards maybe.
Right, but what I'm getting at is, is that if I go down to, I have a commercial account, I'm paying $145 per ton, okay? $290 for-
Two tons.
20 cubic yard, I mean, it's more than that coming in.
Oh, there's not-
And I'm just getting at that, I mean, if it's done in 2007, and everybody's coming around saying, since 2015, 16, garbage removal, whatever, is becoming a lot more expensive.
Well, the issue, this was done primarily, I mean, the town, when you read the, the ordinance related to the solid waste district, we're not supposed to allow any commercial. This was because they were going to have property managers, and we wanted to, to accommodate that.
I, I get it, but what I'm saying is, is that if I'm paying $145 a ton down in Rutland for a commercial account, you know, if, if, if a, if a truck is carrying 2 cubic yards, I mean, these trucks that we're talking about have the big sides up on it and everything, they're bringing in a ton, I mean, it doesn't take much, they're bringing in at least 1,000 pounds.
Well-
I'm just saying, I think this should be revisited.
And, and I'm fine with that, I'm not, I'm not discussing that, I'm just saying, what, typically what happens is, when they come, because they go to one site one time, you're half recycling, half trash when they come, so they're not carrying that much weight, but there might be 400 or 500 pounds in there.
And I don't go to this dump here, you know, I, I just don't go to it, because it's easier for me to go down to, when we're closed, down to the other place. I just hear from other people when I'm in this, you know, like, they're asking me questions, like commercial haulers, and they just see them pulling in, dumping stuff, and there's no card getting, I mean, this is what I'm being told, I'm not there, I don't know.
Right.
But, you know.
Right, that's stuff, we have to revisit these items and, and looking at the number of bags that that actually means. Because it should, they should not be paying less than the 240 a bag, obviously, so we'd have to, we'd have to revisit that.
Yeah, that's all.
We are saying we're losing money over there, right?
Well, we, and it, and, and from the state's perspective, that's by design, you're not allowed to charge for recycling, you're not allowed to charge for electronics recycling, you're not allowed to charge for any of these items.
That's for, that's for a town.
Right.
And that's for using it for residential.
Correct.
I'm not talking about residential.
You're talking about just a commercial.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Well, I mean, if you, you know, that's, that's an exemption that came at some point, but it, our ordinance was designed to be just for residential.
I don't remember the last time I sold one of those.
Yeah, I'd sell them, they're just going in and dumping.
Right.
So, basically, basically, I, I will, you know, refine this and come back-
We don't want to give the senior citizens, right? We give the commercials.
I will do the, I will refine the budget numbers that we've done to this point, and when I come the next time, I'll have the tax rate implications, and I will highlight any of the areas, because there was some areas where we did do some increases, and, and looking at, is there anything that we need to, to address, and just try to get the last refinements on December 3rd, and then we'll clean it up for the December 17th meeting, I think would be the goal.
All right.
Any other questions on that stuff?
Uh, not for me.
Oh, and by the way, the, the tax rate, the, the dollars were based on the current 411 when I did the revenue, so.
You had the anticipated school tax rates.
That goes to Preston. What was that?
You had the anticipated school tax rate.
Yeah.
Is that with the additional 40 cents?
31% increase if you vote in a 65, 68 million dollar bond.
Oh, my.
Managers report?
On, I have a couple of Lister corrections, while they're, they're, I don't know if I classify them technically as corrections. Basically, they're related to the, to the tax on personal property. There's four, well, three businesses here that no longer exist, so they just need to be taken off tax rolls, which is Santa Fe Steakhouse, Red Clover Tattoo, Amazing Homes, and then another correction related to VTEL, VTEL by state statute, telephone doesn't pay theirs to the town, but we still have it listed on our tax rolls, and we want to make that removal. So, those are the four items that we would be taking off, and you're talking a total of a couple thousand dollars in, as it relates to taxes, it's not a huge number.
Do you need a motion to do this?
Uh, yes, please.
So, Santa Fe Restaurant, that's all I know, I mean, how much is it?
I don't know the number, they didn't put the number on the sheet.
Also including the inn, too, on it?
As far as I know, it's just, it's a Santa Fe Restaurant, it's only the restaurant portion.
And when did the Santa Fe, or when did the Mountain Inn close? I didn't think it closed until after May. The building's still there, it has, I mean, that would be like me coming in and saying that, you know.
Well, it's got to be transferred, it's got to be transferred to the new owner, is what it amounts to, the new owner has to be.
So, is Santa Fe being transferred to the new owner?
Because you don't know that they have the same personal property, they will get the new questionnaire and, and process, so that-
The new property's going to have a distillery in it, so it's going to be different than the Santa Fe Restaurant.
That's a whole different animal, that they're going to get a separate, a separate billing next year, so they will be getting their-
What I'm getting at is they're getting no bill for this year.
Right.
And what I'm getting at is, is that the Butternut Inn does not exist anymore either. But it did exist as of April 1st, and that's the way the taxes are done. It's April, it's as of April 1st, and then if you take all your inventory out after April 1st, it doesn't matter, what was there is April 1st. I'm not going to make a big deal about it, but, you know, say, one year or whatever.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I mean, I just-
Hold off on that, we can hold off on it.
You know, I mean, and that would be like me coming now and saying, I don't want to pay for that.
As far as I know, that was only for the portion of it, but I'm not 100% sure. I didn't, I didn't ask that question.
I mean, how much is it?
It wasn't much, but I, I don't have the answer, I get you the specifics, we'll do it on the 3rd.
Yeah, on, on Santa Fe Restaurant, I would just like to hold off on that one.
All right, well, let's just do the VTEL one.
The VTEL one, and then the Red Clover-
Well, they're all on the same sheet.
Oh, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the VTEL. And please find out, it's, you know, when was the, when was the, when was the Mountain Inn closed on, which included Santa Fe?
Okay.
Okay, so this is VTEL.
From 2015 to 2018 taxes.
Yeah, so that's another thing there, yeah.
Right.
It's saying Santa Fe Restaurant, whatever, in a raise for personal property taxes from 15 to 18, and is no longer in business. When you buy, don't you really have to take over the taxes to clear it?
Right.
You know?
No, that's, I will, we will get you all the details.
Okay. And then the same thing for-
I got that today.
The same thing for Amazing Homes, it's saying 15 to 19, it was in business until, you know.
Right.
Well, they're claiming they weren't in business, and, and we've been getting letters back and forth and arguing and stuff like that.
My motions for VTEL.
Yep.
All in favor of the VTEL adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
And-
We'll table the rest.
Yeah, we need to table the others. This one is-
VTEL.
Okay.
I mean, I'd love it if we approved it. Because then, like, any of the back taxes that I owe on the Butternut, let's just forget about.
Oh.
Doesn't, you know, taxes is taxes for the year you run business.
Okay.
I have two driveway permits. One is on Overbrook Drive and, and Robinwood, it's a very standard, it's a downhill one, they'll have the normal conditions, they're not more than 5%, there's no culvert required because it's on the downstream side, and it's, it's in a fine location as far as visibility, so there's, this is a, it's for Walter Johnson.
Motion to approve Overbrook driveway permit?
For Walter Johnson.
Walter Johnson.
Those in favor of the Overbrook, please say aye.
Aye.
And the other one is for Young Namcong, I apologize if I, and this is for a driveway adjacent to the high-rise condominiums. It's, it has, it's had an old logging road there for years, when they did some work down in there, it's basically converting that into a driveway on the downside, right on the, this is the acreage with the driveway that's going to be installed.
So, when you pass, when you're coming up from Killington Road, you make a left on East Mountain Road?
Yeah.
And you-
Yeah.
And you pass High Ridge Road, and you pass High Ridge Road, it's the, are you passing High Ridge Road?
Yes.
And so then it's that-
Past, past the condominiums, it's beyond that.
Past the condominiums, behind there.
Yeah.
And someone wants to turn that into a driveway?
Yeah, well, they want to put a driveway in for their house, and I told them they had to have 20 foot straight, they're going to have a lot of fill there.
Can you go to High Ridge and make sure that High Ridge is okay with that?
Yeah.
High Ridge has put plenty of, they're the ones that put the gate up, and we got into a conflict with them.
Well, this isn't, this isn't their land, this is, I will double check. I mean, this one, that was a separate lot, so I-
When I built the house inside of High Ridge-
Well, you were on the other side, though, right?
They made you come in that way, because they, and that was the only way you could come in, and they ha, I mean, High Ridge thinks they own a lot, I just make sure, you don't want to get into-
This is further down the road.
I will confirm that.
I know where it is. That's what they made us come through, that feet-freaking trail.
Oh, I know where you have to go through, yeah.
But I don't, I don't think they have any real say in thinking in it.
Right below the buildings, right? Left hand, right below the building?
That's what I think he's talking about.
It's a little further than that.
Is this on High Ridge land, or is this somebody's personal property?
It's somebody's personal property on East Mountain Road.
Right, but it's not in High Ridge condominiums.
No.
Oh, okay, you said High Ridge, and that's why I was like-
It's adjacent, they share a property, they share a property line. Okay? The eastern side is the, is the shared property line, but this is a separate piece of land.
Okay, no, yeah, all right. You said in High Ridge.
No, 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 next to High Ridge. I apologize.
Because I know where, I know where this piece is.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve that one also.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Sorry about that, guys.
That's okay.
Well, the next item was FEMA determination, but I already mentioned that we're only going to have to pay the $137,000 back, so in essence, we got our, our after-the-fact grant, is what it amounts to.
Yeah.
So I think that bug in their ear was successful. And then the next is department updates. I don't really have anything specific to go over, other than in the highway department, our, our new hires, our hire is doing really well, and everything's going well, and the trucks are, we're having no issues, which is actually news. And then, and also, reporting back on the, the position with recreation director and, and the school, we are, we have all of our signed contracts in place, we're, we're billing them, and all of that function is working correctly, and everybody seems to be happy with the results, so right now, I have not any big items to report, but everything's going well from a departmental perspective. So, sorry for the boring report.
All right. Since I got here late, guys, and sorry about that, I've had a few people approach me about golf carts and ATVs on Killington Roads.
Were you at a restaurant down there?
No, I was never at the restaurant. I got phone calls, I said. Okay? And all I said was that, I know it's coming from two people, ATV from one, and golf carts from another, okay? That somewhere after we're done with budgets or whatever, we'll put the item on the agenda so the public can vent it out or whatever.
Well, I think, I think it's a discussion when we move to the next phase, which should be right after the turn of the year with the, the master plan.
Right.
And having the conversation, because, you know, there was a lot of good input when we had the initial meeting with the public, but a lot of that is not really directly related to the road itself. But I think what we're going to want to do, whether it's a subcommittee, or punting it a little bit to the recreation commission, to see how these things tie in, to see, you know, where do we want to put these types of trails, how do we make it work, and then we tie it into the road project, and make, that will be running kind of simultaneously to make-
Well, these people are looking to be driving around on our roads.
Well, and that's, and, and that's a discussion-
And I just said that we will put it on the agenda at a certain time, and see if the folks that are asking me, I only promised I would bring it up, and we'd get it on an agenda, and let's see if they show up.
The bigger issue is, you know, when it, when it relates to that, it really relates to the size of your walkway, which affects location. I mean, it's really-
No, once again, they want to be on the road with a registered plate on an ATV or on a, on a golf cart.
We're talking road width, and then additional, like 10-foot shoulders.
No, they're talking riding on the road. There are some towns that allow inside where a car can drive, where you have with blinkers and everything else, and brake lights. I just said, you know what, I've heard it so many times, we'll, some point after the budget, put it on the agenda, and see if the public is interested and show up.
We actually have a policy as it relates to ATVs, specifically-
Class four, right?
Yeah, only class four.
We're going to do the class two.
And they want to have that, we'll have the conversation?
Yeah, we'll have the conversation. That's all I promised.
Yep. Okay, I was, I was thinking you were talking about the part of the master plan-
No, no, I'm not talking about building ATV trails.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Do we have any liquor control this time?
We have two. One, I apologize for jumping the gun, but Lucretia was going to be away. This is the outside consumption permit for the Killington Resort, for the World Cup, that they wanted to make sure we got included, and Lucretia was leaving today, so I do have a signed copy of what was being mailed. She signed it before she left, but just wanted to get a-
Motion to move the letter forward, that's signed by the town clerk.
Yeah.
On the favor? On a World Cup outdoor.
Aye. And the other is a, is a festival permit, a special events permit, which is the Vermont Brewers Association having a beer tasting event, and this is in, it's a ways off, where did they go?
Where is it located?
I didn't put it on there. Beer tasting, option for, where's the, oh, 321. It's in March, from 11:08 N to 8:00 PM. It's a beer fundraiser at the Bear Mountain at Killington Resort. It's a special event.
So they have it, they have their area roped off and everything, so a motion to approve that.
Yeah. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have other business? Do you folks have other business?
You update on the lights going up the road? I know they were working on them.
They're just, they're just, tracing them has been a nightmare, and they're in the process. I just, we're, we're getting them done. I just, it's just a matter of getting it, and I told them it had to be done before the World Cup.
Did we make any talk before I got here about update on the public safety building?
No, the public safety building-
We only did the minutes before.
Is now at a point where we are getting ready to pour foundations, based on today, other than any other giant weather delays, whether cold or anything else, we are on a July 31 completion date at this time.
Really?
Yeah.
No, I didn't think it was that soon.
And basically, right now, we know we used up some of our contingency related to ledge, we're just trying to finalize that, but everything else has come in on budget, and we're good to go.
And once again, people ask me, and I just say that we are within the budget, and I'm not here to micro-manage to do it.
We are within the budget at this time, and I don't anticipate, once we get, once you get concrete in the ground, there's not very many variables at that point.
Well, as long as there's no changes to the bill.
Well, we, and, and I've already notified them, I don't care who says it or what they want, there's no changes to the building. It's going to be kind of simple as that.
Yeah.
So, that's good.
Okay. Do we have a need for executive session? My sense with the golf budget would be to-
Another time.
Get this squared away with the town budget, because we have a contract that goes for the next year.
Right.
We don't necessarily have to do that now, plus, they have sent us some information about possibly leasing the property, and I think that we need to know more about that.
Right, and that's why I was getting at, that we should have something where we're going to come together, and maybe set a little time to, to go through it underneath executive session.
Right, and we need to know what they're offering, and what their options are.
Right. We need to come together as a group before we, I don't want to sit and-
Go back and forth with them.
No, I don't want them in the room while we're-
Right.
You know.
So I would anticipate, you know, we can, we can either have a special meeting at some point, or do it in one of the next two, but actually, the reality is, is probably right after the first of the year, if we've completed the budget, might be the ideal time to start having that conversation.
Right. Okay. And just so you know, I will not be at the next meeting, which you can approve anything you want. You'll have two votes.
Well, what I'll, what we'll do is-
I'll have two votes?
No, Chuck gets two.
You're talking to me!
I was talking to Chuck.
Who's talking to me? You'll have two votes!
Chuck gets two votes.
Thank you for giving me your proxy!
So the only, the only real, the only real thing that I think, and it's if you have any input, and I'll make sure you get it plenty and ahead of time, is any comments you might have related to the budget, and we can, when we come in and go over the agenda, we can do that.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm away that day, but, but it's a down and back thing. I'm here the day before and the day after.
Well, just if you have, if you have any concerns or thoughts, well, you know, we'll just go over those. But I think that will be the focus of the next meeting, is getting that cleaned up, and then probably having a conversation related to the results of tomorrow night's planning commission meeting and the short-term rental zoning issue.
Right. Okay.
So.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. We're adjourning at, say, 18.